Present New Brunswick Public School Virtual Reality Program. Our district's vision is to prepare, empower, inspire lifelong learners and leaders. So for this evening, we'll be providing an overview or purpose of the WISE program, as well as an overview of our virtual reality program. As a district, we continue to prioritize the overall wellness and mental health of our students and school community. We wanted to take a moment to thank Dr. Johnson. As he has allowed for us to serve in this capacity, he serves as a mental health advocate and continuously encourages us to find intentional and innovative ways to meet the needs of our students and school community. So we thank our superintendent for allowing us to do this work in the district. With that being said, we were provided also with an opportunity to develop the WISE program, which serves as an umbrella of support for all of our schools and our mental health providers, which are counselors and school social workers throughout the district. So we're very excited about the WISE program, and Ms. Schwetthed is going to share a little bit more about that.
So WISE stands for Wellness Intervention in Student Empowerment, and the name actually encompasses all tier levels of service that we aim to provide. In addition to direct service, we also work to spread awareness within our school community and really end the stigma surrounding the discussion of mental health. As a team, we are constantly looking for new and innovative ways to really meet the needs of our diverse students and as well as the staff. To do this, we are constantly looking at national and youth data trends in youth mental health. So some of the consistent trends we noticed were that students are facing a multitude of mental health challenges. And as many of you that are around adolescents can attest to the fact that they're constantly on social media, on their phones, and using technology. And lastly, we really saw that there is a consistent need to get more interaction and participation from students. So we really started looking at leveraging emerging technologies to meet some of those needs. We also looked at our specific district data based on mental health referrals. We were getting many referrals. And in addition to anxiety, depression, and PTSD, we saw we had a group of multilingual students that were newcomers to the country that were consistently stating that they had feelings of nostalgia and longing for their home country, which was really impacting their overall social, emotional learning and wellbeing. So again, we looked at all of our data and trends and really started to think of different ways that we could incorporate virtual reality and individualize it for our students' needs.
To briefly define virtual reality, it's a 3D environment that enables users to explore and engage within that virtual environment, if you will, that approximates reality. There are three types of VR. For this program, we selected fully immersive, where it provides the users with the most realistic simulation experience. There is limited research when it comes to virtual reality at the school level, but we did found research in 2022 that VR therapy assists with decreasing anxiety and depression by helping those learn symptom management, which transcends to real life. In 2021, there's also a study that showed that VR meditation with neural feedback was most effective, more so than guided audio alone.
So as Dr. Ford mentioned, there is limited research that we could find on utilizing virtual reality in mental health. And when we looked at school mental health programs, there was really no research that we could find. So what we decided was to start our own mental health program utilizing virtual reality. And we used different applications. We started our own pilot program. We included students and staff, and we intentionally chose them and made sure that the applications we choose met their individual needs. They were given surveys before and after each session to, so we could gain data. And then also, to keep the integrity of our program, we made sure that every participant met with the school psychologist or social worker before and after each session. And based on this data, we realized some qualitative findings that we will share with you today. And some of them were that we noticed that participants were more likely to engage in things that they normally would not have, such as meditation and mindfulness sessions. The students that were reporting nostalgia after VR sessions were much more likely to share their stories and engage with their counselor. And overall, as we started discussing, school mental health staff started discussing noticings, they saw that rapport was much easier to be built after a VR session. And participants, including students and staff, were much more likely to talk about their social, emotional wellbeing.
So our next step as a district, we will continue to research VR to better address intersectionality and promote inclusivity. We're going to continue to provide multi-tiered systems of support across the district and collaborate with the broader schools so that we can share and promote awareness of the benefits of virtual reality. This brings us to exciting news to share. As a result of this work, out of 800 proposals, New Brunswick Public School was selected one out of 32 to present at the Mental Health America Conference in June in Washington, DC. In the next few seconds, we will be sharing a glimpse of our presentation. Not only will you see the participants utilizing the virtual reality goggles, but most importantly, you will hear from the voices of our children, our students of New Brunswick, who we continue to serve wholeheartedly and who brought the life to this program and the impact of the virtual reality goggles. So we hope you enjoy the video. Mental health needs in our youth has been escalating over the past decade. It's been escalating since 2011, even prior to the pandemic. And then since the pandemic, these trends have been exacerbated. And part of the impetus for us creating this program was as we started looking at national data trends regarding mental health, we wanted to keep in mind what those needs were. We need to bring in morning mindfulness, but we wanted to take it one step further and say, how could we really transform our services and aid our students? And so that's what kind of brought us to virtual reality. We're going to show a short video of our students sharing their experiences. So please take a moment to really hear their voices. We are so proud of them, and they really are the inspiration behind. It's good. Okay, I'm just going to dress this top piece. How are you feeling? Good? Okay, good. All right, this is your left and your right. What do you see right now, Kelly?
When I came in, I was anxious, but once I did it and I took off my goggles, I felt relaxed, not anxious.
Me personally, I don't really do things like this, so like, not that I try it out. It really like, it can keep me out of trouble. It was telling me to calm down, be like, wake up. Try to like, let everything out, calm my mind, just calm.
I really liked that because that was a new experience. I'd never used VR stuff. And the environment was, I kept thinking, but very slowly it was gone.
It was my first time trying the VR stuff. And it feels good, like it felt good. I really enjoyed it.
She's telling you to focus on like, make, put your mind on one part of your body. You, it's like to have tension, and then they got like, put your mind on it. And then just to start taking deep breaths. Make sure you relax and focus on the spot that has a lot of tension.
I felt like I had a lot of thoughts running through my head before, but now I'm like, it doesn't have to make you feel really happy, but I feel nice.
It was very nostalgic. I remember a moment very beautiful because we were always running through the house. The plant of my tia, that I always loved, it was one of those. And it was very impressive. I felt very nostalgic. I was all about everything through the window. And I wanted to go there.
The VR session is actually nice because it look like, if you're feeling like anxiety, nervous, like this actually will help you calm down and relax your mind more.
People can get you like to a certain place where you react, and it might be not the way you want to. So like, it might mean like you step up, step out. Just come down here and help you calm down.
It will actually help people with anxiety, depression, anger, anything. So if you ever feel mad, you could come here, you could do the VR. And if you ever feel sad, and you want to meditate or whatever, you could do this. It'll actually help you focus on things more.
More people should try this because it will help you calm, like to be calm and just to... Be calm and ready.
Thanks for teaching us about VR in your school. You mentioned that you're using it for extraterrestrial or social anxiety. Just want to compare more about what those sessions are.
The social anxiety piece is more of the national research or, you know, the overall research that we found. But in terms of social anxiety, I just think that this tool really helps us connect more with the students. So they, they're more willing to come down to our center. They're more willing and open to engage in counseling sessions that then, you know, can promote them to be more creative, more social, and more comfortable in the school environment in general.
And I was just going to add that we're also, you know, we started with these three applications, but there are applications out there that we've been researching, that there's different types of social anxiety that appears specifically to social anxiety, where it has students experience being with one student, then you can approach two and engage them higher and higher. So we're hoping to be able to customize it for your social anxiety as we learn more about those applications.
Thank you for your presentation. So this, um, this, this is a special ability package. Because I have an eight-year-old twin sibling who is a nurse in technology and VR. Like, they're like, trying to think of words. And this, this particular sibling is very much of autism at a very age. As we encountered VR, I was shocked at the clinical advances in my brain on a biological level.
I mean, anything we do on a platform basis is going to rewire, you know, our connections in our brain. But in terms of autism, like I said, there is research out there as well that really utilizes the VR goggles with students or patients who have autism. And it's used in a sense to really like, help them learn even safety protocol so that they can experience it in the immersive simulation and then be able to apply it outside into a real world. So it's really a useful tool for those who are disabilities.
To add that, in our video, some of our students, like we saw, have a dynamic response to another special needs. And so far, what we've seen has all been positive.
I found this so fascinating. Was a little bit about parent consent and buy-in and what you confronted there.
So we did notice that the best way to get parent consent is really give a lot of information. So we have an actual form that goes over the, what virtual reality is, how we're going to use it. And then we make sure that we call parents to answer any questions, make sure they're comfortable, even off of it, they could come into our center and ask to see the goggles. Something that was really important. And then it also helped the students were so excited, they would go over and tell their parents that they really wanted to do it. So I think that when we communicate, it's a tendency to education with parents on how it can help. So we always make sure that we do that to get parents' perspective.
Another question that I had too was, are those sessions discretionary by the student? Can they during a class session pause and say, I'd like to go to the wellness center, take a break, you know, kind of check in and having anxiety? And how is that constructed?
That's, that's really on an individual basis, based on the student's needs. We've done both where they're scheduling sessions. We allow them certain times throughout the day to come. And then there are some students that this may actually be part of an individual plan for them, or we know that it's going to work for them. So we work with the teacher to make sure that there's some kind of behavior and this is incorporated in it, that they could ask a session or any... And these sessions are only three to five minutes, so it's not that they're going to miss the whole class. But there are students that come down, do a three to five minute session, can get free, and then are able to pull that to us.
It's been really nice because even students who are really not directly connected to our center for specific counseling services, it's kind of opened them up to wanting to come to our center. And they get to experience it as well. It kind of just opens up the discussions of mental health and just extends them to virtual reality and meditation. And so it's been really positive.
Another question. The gentleman in the middle of the program who could illustrate for the eight results you're seeing, I question, were these results surprising to you compared to your experience with more traditional interventions? Were they more or less effective than you expected?
I was surprised because I didn't think that I'd be 100% wanting to try it again. Regarding traditional methods, we did have a group that wanted to participate in the group types of meditation or mindfulness, but this has opened up to students that traditionally did not want to try it, or willing to try it, but they didn't do it in a private location. So overall, I just was surprised at the amount of students that had such a positive. We can check in the data, but we showed that, but it was everything that they were reporting was overall.
You know, I just think the technology is definitely, that's something that pulled them in. And, you know, when we would sometimes suggest to some of our students, oh, let's do a meditation, you know, like this audio-only meditation, sometimes the reaction wasn't as positive. But then when they saw this device, they were all really eager to participate.
On that note, I'm curious how you got the students involved? Did you present it to everyone and say, this is available for everyone? Like, how would they know about the program, sign up for it, and be able to use the program?
So regarding our actual mental health program, students are referred in various ways. They can come down themselves, staff can refer, parents can refer. We were very intentional when we started the program in choosing students that we felt that this would be a good fit as part of their overall counseling goals. So we started with this smaller group. And as Ms. Monodon said, as the students started talking about it, we would get the healthy mind friend come and try it. We never turned the students away. So we would then go through the process with them and, you know, start the steps again. The way we're explaining to them what it is. And then during their sessions, based on what they were presenting and how they responded to this.
I don't think you have the data that you have, but I wondered how it looked to the other teachers and educators, the other types of results. Did you see fewer outbursts? Did you see better academic gains? That, that's really uninteresting.
I think that in general, as a next step for us was ultimately get more like data from teachers post our, you know, students participating in these sessions. But in general, I think, I mean, I can speak to our program and just our, the students to participate in it. You know, their response has been as the VR students who maybe are just doing better with self-regulation in class, knowing that they have this sort of services there. And then they kind of know when you need to have a VR session. There's like, it's kind of like, you know, something they know is maybe a coping mechanism for them if they need. So we don't have any direct data, you know, regarding outbursts or things that teachers have been looking forward to that, you know, something they definitely want to follow.
Good question. Can you speak to the training that the staff needed to receive in order to be able to know how to properly use the technology and equipment to support the students?
So before we started using with our students, our entire team, our superintendent and assistant superintendent, made sure that we tried it first. We want to be very authentic when we do any type of counseling with our students and be able to speak for ourselves. So we had a session that was interesting because some of us immediately figured out how to use it. And I'll tell you again that the students were much trickier to use the staff was.
It does take, it's definitely different as adults to, you know, you're not that comfortable with new technology. So it did take time for us to even, you know, learn how to even place it on the student's head properly, you know, navigate the different apps. We have a great support team that helps us with very good at technology. Is that where it's still happening? They do help us as well. So it just, it was just a time to, for us to experience and continue that practice so that we can really assist the students.
And adding a system, we have a technology department that did come down and actually created some workshops that we had that.
Thank you, Dr. Ford, for the presentation, Ms. Shetty, Ms. Monodon. I think what Department of Social Services, Support Services, wanted to just demonstrate was their attempt today or this year to address the mental challenges and issues that many of our students have, as well as, you know, potentially many of our staff. And we felt that we are on to something. And as you can tell from this presentation, and I, I might say that I think we're probably the only district in New Jersey right now because I've not found or heard of anyone that's actually experimenting with VR and mental health. But I can tell you, after that meeting, the amount of phone calls, emails from other school districts from the country trying to acquire, I think we may have started the curve. But we want to be embedded in the work and continue to find innovative ways to meet the needs of our students. So I just want to thank the WISE team, the entire WISE team. I know we only saw three of us today, but for your work in bringing us forward. And we look forward to the outcomes. Looking forward to building the research and being a leader in New Jersey. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And I think that I may want to add, in the world of clinical therapy, everyone is really trying to figure it out. After the pandemic, we saw a lot of cases that, and for youth, a lot of the issues, and not that many resources to really change the wave of what was happening. What I found that we had research that really, the research showed, right? That there was a positive findings. And then really tailoring that to our district. And Dr. Ford and Ms. Shetty, thank you. Because I think we really got something here. So, yeah. Next, we have a special recognition. I would like to call Mr. David Aragon, our student board member, our student board member who's here. The New Brunswick Board of Education recognizes David Aragon, the student representative 2022, 2023 school year. Thank you for your service and dedication to the students of New Brunswick Public Schools. I think I also saw pictures of Mr. Aragon also being prom royalty, so. Next, I'm going to turn it to Dr. Johnson for the presentation of honoring our retirees, Teachers of the Year and Educational Service Professionals of the Year.
So good evening. The time that we've been waiting for. Before I call the retirees up to recognize your dedication to the city of New Brunswick, again to New Brunswick Public Schools, I do have a few words to say. For many years, you have devoted yourself to educating and providing support for children. Whether you're a school bus driver, whether you're security guards, parent professionals, teachers, specialists, secretaries, nurses, maintenance workers, or administrators, your retirement is a celebration, not just for all the years invested in the New Brunswick Public School District, but for every child you have helped along the way and the knowledge it was imparted. You will forever remain in the heart of the children that you have touched. You're given your time and talents in many ways that made a difference in your lives. And for that, we say thank you. Your teachings will forever be treasured. Your contributions in students' lives can never be measured. I am sure that our students will blossom beautifully because of the seeds that have been sown by you. Understand that even though you are retiring, the values and knowledge that you have given to our students will never retire. However, now that you can look back with pride at all your accomplishments and everything that you've done, as the time now comes for you to reminisce, you can also now say, no. I saw it a little bit because the board meeting started at seven and you walked... and you walked in at seven-ten. But you can now say no, no more lesson plans, no more late-night grading papers, no more observations, no more teacher-parent conferences, long staff meetings, or Google meets. No more new ideas at the last minute. Yeah, you can say, yeah, go ahead, say what you have to say. No more new programs, no more traffic stress, and no more unexpected changes to your already planned day. While enjoying each moment in your life and the many days to come, I'm sure you'll remember that the best part of teaching has been touching the hearts of our students. You are retiring from one of the most important jobs in the world. Retirement means giving up a job, not giving up the right to teach. I hope you never stop teaching children about the important lessons of life. Teaching is a very normal profession that shapes the character, the caliber, and the future of our children. Keep on teaching. I want to wish everyone a happy retirement and congratulations on a successful career. Thank you so much. Now, as we recognize our 35 retirees, I'm going to call your name, and I'm going to call your name from least years of service in New Brunswick Public Schools to most years. And when I call your name, you may just come up and stand on the stage, okay? I'd like to recognize Dorisa Leach, seven years, ten months. Wanda Scott, eight years and three months. Don't worry, take your time. You deserve it. Cesar Cabrera, 10 years. Daniel Burke, 10 years, 10 months. Jennifer Brown, 10 years and 7 months. Teresa Brooks, 10 years and 8 months. Therese in our practice, Therese. That's what I said, and they told me Therese, Therese. We'll talk about it later. Anna Sophia Loop, 11 years, 3 months. Robert Schwascheck, 11 years, 6 months. John Luis Awayorio, 14 years and 10 months. Kenya Eason, 14 years and 11 months. Eve Kafaski, 15 years and 9 months. Elizabeth Serrano, 16 years and 1 month. Esther Alvarado, 17 years and 10 months. Malenia de Jesus, 18 years and 10 months. Mary Ramirez, 19 years and 1 month. Claudia Robinson, 19 years and 3 months. Robert Aaron Ingram, 19 years and 3 months. Tamara Lynn Eisenberger, 20 years and 3 months. Mary Ingram, 20 years and 9 months. Let me know if you want to super round the back too? No, no, I was joking, I was joking, I was joking. Cesar Enrique Noriega, 21 years. Adrian Fontanberry, 21 years and 1 month. John Messerall, 21 years and 10 months. Lynn Adams, 23 years and 10 months. Marlene Perez, 24 years and 11 months. Louise Karakowski, 25 years and 1 month. All right, okay Louise. Somebody tell her later. Andre Byron, 25 years and 1 month. Angela Seifus, 25 years and 10 months. Monique Brown, 25 years and 6 months. Lino Bartwell, 25 years and 8 months. Lori Guram, 26 years and 10 months. Beth and Valenti, 28 years and 7 months. Sinetta Henry Brittonham, 34 years and 10 months. For 34 years and 10 months, Lynette Coligan. And our last honored retiree, 36 years, Cynthia Brown. Again, we just want to thank all 35 retirees for your years of service in New Brunswick. For those of you who are wondering what is in the blue bags, each and every one of them have been presented with a Fitbit to keep them active, to keep you moving, and to, you know, get you ready for substitute world. My board president just told me that today's price, quote-unquote, is not yesterday's price, and our substitutes that have been employed in New Brunswick has gone from $150 to $300. No joke, 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 joke. That's not on record, that's not on the minutes, just joking. But looking forward, if you ever want to come back and work with us, with our open hands. I'm sure our principals out there will be like, yes, come back. Again, thank you so much, we'll take the picture. We appreciate everything you have done.
Monique, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Good evening. Today, we celebrate and honor New Brunswick outstanding educators and Educational Services Professionals of the Year. These individuals have been identified by the school community. These individuals have been identified by their school community as having gone above and beyond at their service to the students of New Brunswick. When I call your name, please approach the stage. Richard Ciancia. Kathryn Velasquez. William Van S. Jenna Morris. Kevin McCory. Jessica DeLuca. Andrea McThurman. Maria Prasasova. Karen Assam. Megan Russell. Melissa Hoffman. Stephanie Lacanther. Darlene Keller. And Beth Upson. Let's hear it one more time for our Educators of the Year. Please stay on stage. Next, we have our Educational Services Professionals. Lynette Coligan. Eleanor Peterson. Michelle Stellano. Nancy Havich. Levalon Wallace. Mindy McThurman. Wendy Ariaga. Kevin Zapine. Lauren Nazovic. Felix Huey. Nicole Schultz. Michelle Rad. Congratulations. And the MBEA Support Staff of the Year, Maritza Acevedo. Again, congratulations to the hardworking teachers and Educational Service Professionals Support Staff members of the 2223 school year for their dedication to the students of New Brunswick and the profession. Thank you. Principal, at this time, please step forward and join us on the stage for pictures. As we continue with our board meeting, we would like to say thank you. Thank you again and congratulations. Moving to item number four, Minutes for May 9, 2023, Reorganization Meeting Minutes and May 26 Monthly Board Meeting Minutes. May 16, I'm sorry. Moving to item number five, Superintendent Support, Dr. Aubrey Johnson.
Yes, thank you. For the month of June, we have enrolled 9,466 students. There were 14 cases of harassment until imitation of bullying. We had 154 suspensions. Our staff attendance rate for May was 94%, 94.6%. Our student attendance was at 92%. We also had one positive case for an employee and four positive cases for students. I would just like to briefly just say, you know, over the years, I've sent many end-of-year messages. And what I've come to realize is that while there's a certain repetitiveness about the process, it's also true that each school year is some ways unique. I want to just take some time and a moment to express my heartfelt gratitude for the hard work and dedication our staff have demonstrated throughout the year. The past school year, you have persevered, working tirelessly to ensure that our students and their families receive the best possible education and support. Your tireless efforts have not gone unnoticed, and I want to assure you that your hard work is deeply appreciated. The commitment and passion that you bring to your work every day is inspiring. I encourage you to take the time to reflect on your achievements, no matter how small they may seem. You have made an impact on the lives of our students, and that is something to be proud of. I know, it wasn't easy. But you did what was necessary to continue providing the best solutions and the best educational experiences for our students and families. Sincerely, thank you to our district administrators, our teachers, our staff, our families, our board members, our community partners. Collectively, you are an exceptional educational team, and we must continue to work together as a team. And I must say that I'm proud to work alongside you. In terms of celebrations, I might laugh a little on this one, but on June 16, we recognized our security officers for an invaluable service they have provided to our school community. And when I talk about teamwork, it's about seeing things from other people's point of view and listening to others because in our roles, we don't know everything and we don't see anything, but we perceive that everything is normal. And throughout the school year, there is many national recognitions that I have actually spoke on at the board meeting, recognizing different staff members from the district. And I usually pull that from some type of national archive that actually dictates what days and what months we recognize certain staff. And I've done that all year. But I do want to thank MBEA President Ms. Vega, who brought it to my attention about our school security officers. And I looked at her like, really? I didn't do that? And I reflected, and then I went to search to determine whether or not there is a national school security officers there. And I really cannot find day. And I really cannot find any. I did, I did find national security, but it incorporated a lot of people. So until the forces that be determined these days, and I need to figure out where these, who makes these days, we're going to recognize June 16th in New Brunswick as school security officer day. And maybe we can make that national. Again, we will lead somewhere somehow. So I want to thank Ms. Vega and her leadership team for just making that as awareness for next year. And I said, oh, no, 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 we can make this happen this year. So from our hearts, we want to thank the school security officers for the invaluable service they have provided to our school community. They have served tirelessly to ensure the safety and security of all our students, teachers, and staff members. Their presence in our school has made us feel safer and more secure, given us the peace of mind to focus on daily tasks and educational pursuits. On our behalf of the entire school community, we honor the service and are grateful for your efforts. Also, in terms of recognition, as you can see from the presentation today, and I won't speak much of it, I think I spoke about being able to present at the National Conference in Washington C of Mental Health, and out of so many applicants, being one of, I believe, 35 or 34 school districts in the nation to present, I do feel honored. And we did this on June 9th, and our wise team put together a really great, I don't know if the word is snippet, but just a good package of what we're trying to do here in New Brunswick. And sitting in the audience and hearing the comments and hearing, what city is this? Where are you doing this? Can you provide me information? I just got off the phone with my superintendent and said that we need this here in our city, in our state. It made me realize that we are doing some great stuff here, and we don't really receive the notice for what we're trying to attempt. So again, I am grateful for the willingness to try all types of innovative approaches to promote positive change in our school district. And I just want to recognize the work that Dr. Ford and her wise team has done and being able to present at a national conference. Thank you. Also, on Saturday, June 10th, we worked through our continued partnership with New Jersey Black Women Physic Association, New Brunswick Tomorrow, and Middlesex County Health Department. We hosted an end of year All-In for New Brunswick Community Fair virtual school. We had over 40 community partners along with our different district departments and our district administrators who came together to provide information, resources, and donations for our families. We thank all of our staff, our community partners, our testing labs, our pharmacies, who partnered with the, with the district to make such a variety of resources available to our staff and families. Again, we appreciate you. Most recently, I believe maybe three years ago, we received some emails from the National School Public Relations Association. And usually every year, they recognize school districts across the nation in the areas of publication and digital media. And this year, New Brunswick Public Schools earned honorable mention awards in the areas of video content, social media content, and writing content. Entries were judged across similar districts nationwide and was judged on excellence and quality. Our work will be recognized during the annual meeting and celebration of achievement at the National School Public Relations Association 2023 National Seminar in St. Louis, Missouri. We are very proud of this recognition. I would also like to express my sincere appreciation for the Moving Up ceremonies that took place on June 5th and June 16th in our middle grade schools. These events captured the essence of celebration and academic achievements, reflecting on the dedication and hard work of our students, teachers, and staff. Witnessing the joy and pride at the faces of the families and students as they transition to the next phase of their educational journey, high school, was truly heartwarming. At last, on Friday, June 23rd, we will celebrate the graduating class of 2023 from our New Brunswick High School, our Health Science Technology High School, the New Brunswick Adult Learning Center, as well as Cohort One of the New Brunswick P-Tech, who will be completing the high school graduation requirements of their programs. We invite our students and their families to join us in this celebration, which will take place at the Jersey Mike Arena located on the Rutgers University Livingston Campus. Thank you, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much, Dr. Johnson. And I believe that graduation is going to be open for everyone, right?
Open for everyone.
As a Rutgers alumni, Sebra alumni, it's truly a, going to be an amazing day. So everyone's invited. Moving to item number six, the student representative report, Mr. David Aragón.
I'm sorry, Madam President. Can we have a vote for the superintendent's report first, please?
Yes, I was too eager talking about Rutgers graduation and, and, and New Brunswick graduation. So can I please have a motion to accept the superintendent's report?
Dr. Caldwell. Mrs. Medina Hernandez. Mr. Ortiz. Mrs. Seeland. Mr. Spencer. Ms. Varela. Mr. Dorn. Ms. Sevilla. Motion approved.
Now moving to item number six, the student representative report, Mr. David Aragón.
Good evening. Our instrumental spring concert was held on June 2nd at New Brunswick High School. This event, this event showcases the hard work and dedication of our students with performances by our orchestra, band, jazz band, and percussion ensemble. Performances like these exemplify the remarkable progress and growth achieved by our students, reflecting the collaboration between our dedicated educators and aspiring musicians. Big thank you to Dr. Mersinger, Mr. Atalita, and Mr. Bojich. Our choral and dance showcase was originally scheduled for June 8th. Due to unforeseen circumstances, the wildfires in Canada, it was canceled and they had to reschedule to June 12th. Despite this last minute change, our singers and dancers gracefully adapted to a new schedule, highlighting the unwavering dedication and flexibility of our talented students. Another big thank you to choir director Mrs. Herskowitz and dance teacher, Ms. Rizzo. Senior prom was held on May 26th at the Marigold and Somerset. Almost 400 seniors, senior students from around the district enjoyed the evening that included dinner, dancing, and plenty of photo opportunities to remember this once in a lifetime night. The senior sunset was quickly turned into an indoor event on Friday, June 16th at New Brunswick High School. Seniors were invited to participate in games, enjoy different foods, and create lasting memories at the gradu-, as a graduating class. This is one last chance to get together as a class, have fun, and celebrate accomplishments. Both prom and senior sunset cannot have been successfully executed without the dedication of our class council and class advisors, Ms. Carly Aguilera and Ms. Jennifer Hozaro. Graduation will be held on June 23rd, 2023, at the Jersey Mike's Arena at Rutgers University at 3:00 PM. All are invited to attend as we reflect and celebrate our graduating class of 2023. And finally, as my last presentation as student representative comes to an end, I would like to thank the board, administration, and Mr. Rusnak for allowing me the opportunity to be up here every month. I actually will never forget September 20th, my first meeting, walking through the main entrance and being questioned who I was or where I was going. I explained that I was, I explained that I was a student representative for the Board of Education. The security guard gave me a congratulatory look and said, ooh, you're up there with the big people. I nodded confusedly and continued on. Soon, I walked into a room with people who were, in fact, very important people. I say this not to brag, but to acknowledge all of the accomplished men and women up here who not only look like me, but also grew up in New Brunswick or similar communities. So thank you for looking over our communities, our schools, and our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aragón. You are the most important person on this table, so thank you. And remember, this will always be home, okay? Moving to item number seven, the Facilities Committee Report, Mr. Edward Spencer, chairperson.
The Blanqueta Valente School. All work is progressing as scheduled. Installation of the interior walls has been completed. Installation of the grid for the ceiling is ongoing. Painting and flooring are also continuing. Electrical and plumbing work is progressing on schedule. The electrical switch gear has been installed. Remaining heating and air conditioning equipment has also been installed. The interior doors and hardware have arrived and are being installed. The basketball hoops scoreboard have been installed, and the bleachers are scheduled to go in next. The food service equipment has arrived and installation has started. Tac and marker board installation has started all classrooms. We have paid $40 million to date. The May 23rd, May 2023 invoice is $2.3 million, which will be put at a total of $42.3 million. We are continuing to remain on track for completion this August. We are starting the gym addition completion that will be completed in August of 2024. On the, on the end of this, I'd like to acknowledge the fact, yesterday, I was honored to be speaking at the Juneteenth event by the New Brunswick Culture Center. Some of the things that I came up with, I hear, you know, in the news, you have this whole thing about anti-woke and cancellation culture. It's kind of crazy to me, but when I think about Juneteenth, it makes me really understand. But really, let's talk about cancel culture, right? My best of my knowledge, when I started realizing, not only just for African-American history, but all history, that, that it was a cancel culture before me, 1968. It wasn't until after that that I started getting an understanding about history itself, all history. Now we're in a point, now we're at the stage where now we're going to cancel culture. That is crazy. It's not African-American history. It's all history that anything associated, anything that goes against the norm for other people, not everybody. But Juneteenth stands out for me because when you look at it, the way it came about, Juneteenth, follow me on this, as a result of the Civil War, what happened was President Abraham Lincoln made his Emancipation Proclamation. The orders were out. That was went, went through the military. It was a general order number three. They went out and one general went to Texas. And when he went to Texas, they didn't have that many militaries to enforce the abolition of slavery. Now, keep in mind, it's abolition of slavery. When they went there, they gave him just a note to pass the word. Now, some of the, this one general made sure that the African-Americans, because they were the ones that were really the slaves. Now, there were other slaves. You had indentured slaves that were not, not all African-American. They were other ethnic groups, right? So when he sent the order out, he spoke to the slaves, and essentially that was as far as they got. The newspapers had gotten the notification, but they never put it out so that everyone would know in Texas. And it wasn't until December 6th, that was 1865, that was June when they, when they went out there. They went on the words of Abraham Lincoln. It wasn't official until 1865. And then on January 1st of 1866, it went into place. Now, you were free as a slave. Keep in mind, before, you had the 13th Amendment that, that freed the slaves. Now, freed the slaves, but they weren't citizens, and they couldn't vote. And the thing was, before the 14th Amendment, a native-born citizen was a citizen of a state. You had 13 colonies. And a native-born citizen of the United States went abroad. That also implied that they went abroad. Before the 14th Amendment, an alien or foreigner could become a naturalized citizen of the United States or a naturalized citizen of that state. Now, keep in mind, these were just states. So you were really unified not only by the United States, but you were, before you became the United States, you were a citizen of that state. So there's a lot of, lot of uncertainty in the way they wrote the Constitution. When the 13th Amendment came out, it ratified in December 6th, 1865. It took another two, three years before they ratified the citizenship and naturalization. Now, I'm gonna go back to the 13th. 13th only freed slaves and involuntary servitudes that were essentially indentured slaves. And that's what they freed, okay? So in the third, in the, in the 14th, you were now a citizen of the United States. Prior to that, you weren't a citizen of the United States, but you became a citizen of the United States at 1868. So you were, for three years, you were free, but you weren't a citizen of the United States. And then in 18, and now if your child was born here in the United States, right, you're immigrant, you came here in the country, you had a baby here in the United States, your child was a United States citizen. That's the whole today. That's what we're dealing with right now. It wasn't until two years after citizenship was ratified, that you got the right to vote. And that was in 1870, February 3rd, 1870. The thing is with this, we're now in a situation where there are people now who are challenging not only just the voting, but affirmative action. And the crazy thing is that most of the people, I would say almost 99% of the people in this United States, if you weren't here by force of slavery, right, you came in by immigrant parents, and you became a United States citizen. We have to understand, this thing is a little bit more deeper than what was, what's going on. If we don't address this thing, who knows? They could take away the 13th and the 14th Amendment. They're already talking about the voting rights. So that means we're going to have a situation where they, if they tamper with the voting rights, because you used to have to, you had to go take a test in certain parts of this country. And you had to pay a tax to vote. And now they're trying to reverse that and make it so you have to go back through that whole process. So I'm proud of Juneteenth, and I think everybody in this country should celebrate Juneteenth because everybody benefited off of Jun-, uh, Jun-, uh, Juneteenth. Everyone, everyone, whatever ethnicity, whatever religion, everyone should be celebrating this holiday and understand the importance of what this holiday has meant to this nation. Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much for your words, Mr. Spencer. Moving to item number eight, the Athletic Committee Report, Ms. Patricia Varela, Chairperson.
Good evening, everyone. The spring season has officially come to a close, and there are many things to highlight. Boys' track came in place in the Blue Division with a record of 4 to 1 to 1. Josh Nasario, Antonio Dominguez, Tajay Henderson, and U-Raj Flickmore all earned all division honors and placed in the state sectional meet and moved on to the state group meet. Josh Nasario was the state sectional champion for the shot hook. This past weekend, he also played in the NJ All-Star North-South game with teammate Yaseer Johnson. The girls' track team also had four athletes- The girls' track team also had four athletes make all-divisions, and they were Precious Kamara, Marilyn Cano, Betty Martinez, and Carol Muñoz. Softball all-division went to sophomore Libnie Gaia. Tennis all-division was for all, for second singles, singles to P-Tech, eleventh grader Israel Valentin. Other county awards were the GMC Sportmanship Award to Precious Kamara and Victor Arié. GMC Scholar Athletes were Ozmar Gonzalez and Betty Martinez. Lastly, the NJSIAA Scholar Athlete went to Yassir Johnson. Congrats to all of our end-of-the-year student athlete award winners. Also, can I have a bank reconciliation?
Dr. Caldwell, Mrs. Medina Ramírez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz. Mrs. Sealan.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mr. Rella. Mr. Dornow.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla. Motion approved.
Moving to item number nine, the Curriculum Policy Committee Report. Ms. Emma L. Seawood, Chairperson.
The Curriculum and Policy Committees met last week, and we received updates on the summer school program, which will begin on July tenth and end on August fourth, Monday to Friday, with the exception of the Grade Eight Summer Bridge Program, which will be a one-week program to support our students in making the transition to high school. For grades K through seven, students will engage in interdisciplinary climate change-themed project-based learning with dedicated time for mathematics and reading instruction. In addition, we will provide interventions to identify students with unfinished learning. That program will run from eight fifteen to twelve o'clock for students. For grades nine through eleven, students will engage with courses they need and provide opportunities for enrichment and advancement. That program will run from seven forty-five until two PM. And I believe there's additional information on the website in regards to summer school. And if at any time there's any question, please call the superintendent's office. During the month of June, our students have participated in class, school, and district-level competitions. These competitions have provided opportunities for students to challenge themselves and learn during this process. Two competitions are for grades four through nine and District Game Twenty-four Math Competition and the District, and the Grade Five District Spelling Bee. We would like to highlight and recognize our winners. For the Game Twenty-four Math Competition, grades four through five. First place goes to Lord Sterling. Second place to Roosevelt. Third place to Lincoln Annex. For grades six and seven, first place, Lincoln Annex. Second place, New Brunswick Middle School. Third place, Woodrow Wilson. For grades eight and nine, first place, Lincoln Annex. Second place, Woodrow Wilson. Third place, New Brunswick Middle School. For District Staff, Roosevelt is the winner. The winners for the Spelling Bee Competition were, first place, Jessica Santiago Garcia from Lincoln Annex. Second place, Marlon Sanchez Gonzalez from Lincoln Annex. Third place, Chelsea Sa- Saavedra De Jesus from Roosevelt. The second thing we did was reviewed resolutions, and they're included on the consent agenda for your approval. We also are recommending approval of the policies and regulations. Because we let you off last month and we didn't have any, this month we have three times as many. However, there's only two new policies. The rest are revisions to existing policies. And one policy that's being abolished. Revisions are made to statute or update to administrative code. The following policies and regulations are being presented for approval for the month of June. Policy ninety-one hundred is being abolished, that's public relations. Policy oh-one-four-four, Board Member Orientation and Training. And these are just minor revisions and updates. Policy fifty-three oh-five, Health Service Personnel. Policy and Regulation fifty-three oh-eight, Student Health Records. Policy and Regulation fifty-three ten, Health Services. Policy seventy-four forty, School District Security. And then we have three policies that are being revised to reflect current best practices. Policy and Regulation twenty-five twenty, Instructional Supplies. Policy and Regulation fifty-four ten, Promotion and Retention. Policy fifty-seven hundred, Student Rights. And the third group, revised and newly adopted policies to reflect requirements as of the Federal Integrity Office of Foreign Asset Control Audit. And we have, one, two, three, four policies that fall under that status. Policy sixty-one twelve, Reimbursement of Federal and Other Grant Expenditures. Regulation sixty-one fifteen point oh-one, Federal Awards, Funds, Internal Controls. Policy sixty-one fifteen point oh-four, Federal Funds, Duplication of Benefits. Policy sixty-three eleven, Contract for Goods or Services Funded by Federal Grants. And we recommend these policies are approved on the first reading, since most are revisions. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Ms. Seawood. Moving to item number ten, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. Representative, Dr. Caldwell.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. We had a, really an extraordinary sending-off dinner for, for Mark Finkelstein, who had been president of this board for ten years and was at the commission for thirty-seven years. He, under his leadership, the commission has become really one of the largest educational institutions in the country, serving the most vulnerable students in society. And, you know, he was so well, he's so well-respected that the Speaker of the Assembly was there, obviously the mayor of New Brunswick, the John Lynch, the previous mayor of New Brunswick, several key, other key people and business and others. And it was really just a celebration of, of, of Mark Finkelstein and the organization and just recognition of the extraordinary things that have been done to help families who are dealing with students on the autism spectrum, students dealing with multiple disabilities, and students who are dealing with emotional challenges. So, it's just an amazing, amazing evening. Dr. Johnson was there and got a chance to see just the love that was in that place. It really was nice. That's my report.
Thank you so much, Dr. Caldwell. Moving to item number eleven, Public Comments. Mr. General, do we have people to sign up?
Yeah, we have three speakers who registered their intent to speak. The first is April Nicholas.
Please state your name and address.
Yes, hi there, my name is April Nicholas, my address is one forty-three Sandy Street. The first question I have is on, just a follow-up on a previous meeting's agenda item and something that I emailed about earlier today. So, maybe, maybe Dr. Caldwell and Ms. Sevilla saw it, calling up on some questions I had about the sex ed program at the middle school and high school. Just to remind folks who might have forgotten that back in February, the draft agenda for this board meeting, for the resolution that would have had our middle school and school sex ed teachers trained by an, unball-bi organization pushing non-scientific, non-scientific anti-choice messaging, a religious agenda. There was a lot of public objection to that, and that item was tabled from the agenda. But its inclusion in the draft agenda raised a lot of questions about how we're teaching sex ed in our schools. So, I emailed Dr. Caldwell, the previous board president, a number of months ago with questions about our sexual education curriculum, and I haven't received any answers to that. So, I'm calling up now to see if Dr. Caldwell or the current board president, Ms. Sevilla, have any update on when I might expect to get answers to those questions.
Sure, Dr. Caldwell.
As I had mentioned in the meeting, good evening, that we are board members, right? Our job is to, to, to focus on policy and hire the superintendent. So, your writing should be, as I said, as I've told you, should be directly to the superintendent, not to the board members as to what activities went on in, in the board and the operations of, of the, of the district. So, I would suggest if you write a, a letter to, as I said, I even responded to you that, that the discussion was, there's a lot of information collected about this in every, every committee meeting, every committee meeting. There's nothing specifically that happened with that. But if you wanted further clarification, send a letter to the superintendent.
Okay, I will certainly do that. I will just clarify that in previous conversation about this and in your email response to me, you did not specifically indicate that I should call up with the superintendent. You just said it will take a while to get answers to these questions, so. But I'm happy to address those questions.
Yeah, I said that verbally, actually, I said it verbally, I didn't think I had to put it in email.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to follow those instructions now that they have been made. So, thank you for that. I will forward that email chain to the superintendent. And then I also wanted to.
You have ten seconds.
Okay. Just very quickly about Resolution K, the various policies that are being adopted, abolished, amended. There's quite a lot of them, and it's unclear to me what, what exact changes are being made. There's only a handful of track changes in only a couple of the policies in that very thick packet, and most of them don't have any notation at all as to what specifically the old policy was versus the new policy. So, how can we get that information?
Well, it depends on the policy. But a lot of the policies are, are updates that sometimes are recommendations from the state. So, it varies on that. And that's all I have on that, so, thank you for coming.
Is there just a record of what the previous policy was versus what the, just so we can know what specifically is being amended in them?
And policies are on the website, by the way, so, yeah.
Okay, so we can see the previous version on the website?
You'll have the current policy on the website, yes.
Okay, well, I'll follow up with you via email for an answer of my question.
Yes, thank you. Um, the next speaker is Carlos Ramirez.
Good afternoon, members. Carlos Ramirez reported with New Brunswick today. Chair President, if you could ask Mr. Caldwell if he plans on continuing his term on the board as he's planning to move to a new career? Or will he resign earlier?
That's not relevant to any of our agenda items, so I will give you two minutes and whatever is remaining for your public comments, okay?
So, you don't think it's a valid question to ask if he will remain on the board?
I think Mr. Caldwell is on the board, and asked, right, yeah. But we welcome the rest of the minutes for your comments, thank you.
So, he is planning to finish his term? Okay, I got the thumbs up. All right, now, I wanted to mention why, I don't know if there was some issues with the translator in Spanish. I didn't see the items made available for Spanish translations.
We, we will look into it, thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to mention now that there's a mother here that did not know that she had to notify the board twenty-four hours' notice to speak. So, she did reach out to the security guard on my right that she intends to speak if she's given the opportunity. And I think I also want to, you know, congratulate all the members that they receive recognition for their work throughout the years in the school system. And many of those staffs, I've known them personally. I think they're really great members, you know? I think every term comes to an end where you gotta retire and, you know, focus on your family and things you want to do in the rest of life. And, you know, also to the student representative, I think he's been very good, you know, like he says, standing next to many, standing next to many important members of the board. So, I'd like to congratulate him on his graduation, and we look forward on covering any other future events related with students as well as events that are made available to the public, which they're invited as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Uh, last speaker is Reverend Finney.
And I wish to give a greet to everyone, to the distinguished board of the city. I would like to applaud you for demonstration that I said, Saul, where you congratulated the retirees. I have somewhat scattered remarks regarding these things. I think it's a wonderful thing that Mr. Dr. Johnson mentioned speaking on behalf of the school district in Washington. Is that correct? Dr. Johnson?
Just other comments, please.
My public comment was that I applauded you and the game of the board for such a wonderful display. Now, with all due notice, but in accordance with my question and comments that I would like to the presently, the presently seated board to consider and speak to with cogent succinct honesty are our followers, heard the NJFLA, the FMLA, the ABA, HIPAA, and Geno, the Civil Rights Act, and all of our applicable laws that govern the state and the district, who specifically in the medical or is the medical arm of the district, I think that deserves speaking to, as well as the medically qualified person or persons to determine a patient's slash employee's medical leave of absence, and the person who's medically qualified to visually review confidential medical documentation, who amongst the school board officials, the officials of the school altogether, are permitted to view confidential medical reports. These things deserve speaking to, what is the federal and state written medical review process for accommodations and for returning to work after medical leave. I have quite a list of concerns, as I said to you some time ago, and as Dr. Johnson was speaking to, we have issues of mental health. I said to you that you have undertaken a project which is entirely too large for you. We need the involvement of the community, which I've lived in for the better part of 65 years. I am happy to watch people be successful and come out of this school, which I came out of. And that said, I hope that we can work together for the indigent, those that are not applauded or serviced amongst the ranks of these procedures. And I hope that, it looks like my time is out. Okay, I hope that we will come to grips with what Mr. Spencer was sharing with us, for there is so much more to be said about these issues. And while we applaud one another, we need to take issue with that which is ignored and not appreciated.
Thank you so much, Reverend Finney, for your words.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Yes, I'm leaving now.
Moving to item number 12, the President's Report. As we close this school year and adding to our gratitude to every school staff and to this educational ecosystem, I want to wish everyone a restful summer. And truly, I think that we're coming, we'll be talking about this sort of the end wave of this pandemic, and we see the ripples and the impacts of that. But I think that we're going to be okay. I feel like now we're getting a lot of solutions for some of the narratives and a lot of the issues that we've been having in the educational system. So to that, thank you and congratulations on a successful 2022 and 2023 year, so. And I want to add, I was very proud of knowing that Mr. Spencer was actually at a Juneteenth celebration. I feel that as a Latina and an immigrant living here in New Jersey, I agree with his words and that there's a bridge that we need to connect in understanding how Juneteenth really has impacted every population in in the United States. So thank you, Mr. Spencer. Thank you for sharing your words. And I'm going to share something that I read from Barack Obama, which is absolutely one of my favorite people. And he said, can we see in each other a common humanity, a shared dignity, and recognize how our different experiences have shaped us? And I think that everyone in here and the team behind us, I think that's what they do every single, and I see principals, security guards, directors, and I think that they do that every single day to make sure that our kids are being prepared for our future. So thank you. And with that, moving on to item number 13, Consent Agenda. Can I please have a motion to approve Consent Agenda?
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz. Mrs. Seeland. Mr. Spencer. Au, noted. Mr. Dorno.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes, abstain on B E. Moving to item 14, the Finance Committee Report. Mrs. Ayana Salim.
Mrs. Elise isn't in attendance, but you've all been presented with the finance report and the bills list, so could we have a motion for approval? Dr. Caldwell. Mrs. Medina Hernandez. Mr. Ortiz. Mrs. Seawood. Mr. Spencer. Mr. Dorno.
Yes, abstain on page nine and 23.
Page nine and 23. So noted. Ms. Sevilla.
Yes, abstain on 29.
Page 29. Motion approved.
Moving on to item number 15, Resolution for Closed Session. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, New Jersey SA 1046, provides that certain matters of a public body may be discussed in closed session, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follow of personnel matters, matters of attorney and client privilege. Now therefore be resolved that our first set subjects shall be discussed in closed session by this Board of Education and administrative staff. In the minutes of said closed session, this discussion will be made available to the public when the reasons for the nondisclosure in accordance to the public Open Public Meetings Act no longer exist. Can I please have a motion for closed session?
Dr. Caldwell. Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz. Mrs. Seeland. Mr. Spencer. Mr. Dorno. Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
We are in closed session.
Thank you.
Thank you.